All right, good evening to everyone. Today is Monday, November 13th, 2023. Welcome to the Falls Church City Council Meeting. We're delighted to have you all with us. I'd like to call our meeting to order and ask that you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Duncan?
Here.
Ms. Hardy?
Here.
Ms. Leon?
Here.
Ms. Jean Ciscott is absent. Mr. Snyder?
Here.
And Mayor Tarter?
Here.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. And thank you all for joining us. As I think probably all of you know, we just had a very nice reception in honor of some of our retiring colleagues. And we are going to start our meeting by giving some recognition, some formal recognition to those folks. As I said in the lobby, to us in Falls Church, a small place, having these kind of relationships is extremely important and extremely productive. And it has been so beneficial, I think, to our city, but also to the greater region and to Northern Virginia as a whole. And so, we're delighted to spend some time honoring you all. And I think at this point, too, it's not just, it's really friendships. You know, we form with our neighboring communities and particularly the electeds who've spent so much time over these past years, working collectively for the common good. So, we're going to start with one, our custom here in Falls Church is to have various council members read proclamations. And so, we're going to start with that for Mr. Sasslaw and Senator Sasslaw. And I am forgetting who was supposed to do the Senator Sasslaw proclamation or the recognition. Mr. Snyder?
I can do it, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Thanks very much. It's a great honor to do it and a real friend of the public throughout the state of Virginia and Northern Virginia, and particularly the city of Falls Church. Resolution recognizing the accomplishments of the Honorable Richard Sasslaw on the occasion of his retirement from the Senate of Virginia. Whereas Senate Majority Leader Richard L. Sasslaw, Virginia's longest-serving state senator, will retire at the end of his term in January, closing a legislative career launched over four decades ago. And whereas Senator Sasslaw is a faithful public servant and steward of the Commonwealth, first elected to the Virginia House of Delegates in 1976 and the Senate of Virginia in 1980, and serving as majority or minority leader in every session since 1998. And whereas the senator has weathered changing political climates throughout his decades of service in the Virginia General Assembly, consistently finding himself in leadership roles that have helped guide others through turbulent times. And whereas Senator Sasslaw began representing the city of Falls Church in the 2012 General Assembly session following redistricting. And whereas over the last decade, Senator Sasslaw has served the residents of the city of Falls Church skillfully in the General Assembly and has acted as a patron for legislation requested by city council. And whereas Senator Sasslaw has been a strong ally in procuring funding for regional and local programs, an advocate for requests to amend the city's charter, and a wise counselor who has deftly navigated the rules and customs of the General Assembly. And whereas Senator Sasslaw's legacy lies in his service to his country and community and his contributions to the Commonwealth of Virginia and the city of Falls Church are appreciated and honored.
Now, therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of Falls Church that City Council hereby recognizes with admiration the contributions of Senator Richard Sasslaw over the course of his life and career, and thanks him for his unwavering support for the city of Falls Church. Dick, I'm honored to present this to you. You've been a great friend of Falls Church, and we just absolutely will miss you dearly, but we thank you for your great service. Come on up. And your lovely wife Eleanor, as well, if you'd like to come up, we'd love to congratulate you as well.
Thank you so much. This is so nice.
Thank you.
Let's get a picture.
Get a picture right there.
All right, thanks again.
Thank you all. And it's been a real honor to serve this city. I've told a couple people here, if this isn't the best small-run town in America, it'll do that we find that town. And you all have made a lot of good decisions with respect to economic development, public schools, transportation. Now you've got flood control. And it's been a real honor for me to help you all as much as I could with that. And, you know, when I take a look at, see what's going on with Broad Street and a whole batch of other things, it really makes me feel good to know that the efforts that I put in are helping, but you all deserve the credit because you're the ones that are making it happen. And, you know, just keep going in the direction, keep doing the things you're doing because what you're doing is doing right. I've been all over the state, and I've been to a lot of small towns, and you can't believe all the problems they have. You all don't have them because you've dealt with the situations correctly. And, you know, I've put in a lot of bills for you all, budget amendments, and I'm not done yet. And, you know, I've told Cindy, I said, if you need help during the session or me to make phone calls to anybody, I'll be glad to do it. I'll be glad to help you all out, absolutely. Okay? And again, you know, like I said, thank you all. This is really nice. I really, although I told, when The Washington Post wrote that article, that editorial about me, I talked to some of their people, I just told them I'm not worth all this. But anyways, thank you so, so very much.
Well, thank you, Dick. It's been an honor. Our next recognition is for Penny Gross, who is actually at VACO. She's not here, but who knows, maybe she's watching. So, we're going to go ahead and read that anyway. So, Caroline, would you like to do the honors?
Absolutely, happy to. It is the Falls Church City Council's pleasure to recognize the achievements of the Honorable Penelope Gross, who during her 28 years of service on the Fairfax County Board of Supervisors, worked collaboratively with the city of Falls Church to address road network, bike, and pedestrian access issues in Seven Corners and to develop innovative bus rapid transit solutions on shared roadways. Supervisor Gross has served as the vice chair of the board since 2007 and is a longtime advocate of expanding public transportation, affordable housing, and diversity in Fairfax County, all values that the Falls Church City Council shares. When regions thrive, localities thrive, and the city council wishes to thank Supervisor Gross for her service to the region as the Fairfax County Representative on the Board of Directors of the Metropolitan Washington Council of Governments, which she chaired in 2009, the Northern Virginia Regional Commission, NVRC, which she also chaired, the Inova Health System Board of Trustees, and the Potomac Watershed Roundtable.
All right. Well, Penny, as I think you all know, she's not here tonight, as I just mentioned. Penny, if you're watching, we greatly appreciate the friendship and working collaboratively with you. But Penny has done it all. You know, if you've been around any time in local government, pretty much any position, any regional chair or whatever it might be, Penny's done it probably twice. But she is just a force of nature and will be sorely missed. But Penny, thank you, if you're watching, for all the great work you've done for Northern Virginia. It is much appreciated. All right, let's go on to Supervisor Faust. Is that you?
That's me, yes.
Is that Conley?
There, Supervisor Faust, there you are. It is Falls Church City Council's pleasure to recognize the achievements of the Honorable John Faust, who during 16 years of service on the Fairfax County Board of Supervisors, worked productively with the city of Falls Church on the water system negotiations, west end redevelopment, and redevelopment of the Virginia Tech West Falls Church metro site. In his service to Fairfax County, Supervisor Faust oversaw revitalization plans for downtown McLean, facilitated regional transportation projects, including upgrades of Route 7, led the expansion of community services, including recreation, public safety, library, and senior housing services, and earned praise for leading Fairfax County in economic and affordable housing advances. The Falls Church City Council believes that local governments work better when they work together and is very grateful to have had the opportunity to work alongside John Faust.
All right, John. So, John, we have a recognition here for you, but we're going to do that in just a moment, but I just wanted to, I kind of had my two cents. For starters, John has been intimately involved in the development of Tyson's Corner, one of the economic engines of this state. But I think even more importantly for the city of Falls Church, our collaboration with our 10-acre development, you know, up with the Virginia Tech site, the Womata site, working collaboratively with you, your staff, and your colleagues, has been enormously fruitful and successful, we think, from the city's perspective. And working together on roads, transportation, connectivity, utilities, you name it, you've been there to work with, and we really appreciate it. And it's a lasting legacy, I think you have, not just that, but many other things as well that we most appreciate, and your friendship. So, come on up and get an award here from us, and thank you so much. You can wear that instead of Fairfax County. It's better than the other one. All right. Thank you.
See you soon.
Amen.
Thank you. Don't be a stream. That was all right.
All right. Up next is Mr. Dorsey. Mr. Snyder?
Thanks a lot, Mr. Mayor. You know, one of the great benefits of holding public office anywhere in Northern Virginia is the opportunity to serve with the folks that we're honoring tonight. These are, they all, each individually and collectively, represent the very highest element and commitment to the public that we all serve. So, it's been an incredible honor to serve with each and every one of them. But now, it's my particular opportunity to recognize Christian Dorsey. It is the Falls Church City Council's pleasure to honor the achievements of the Honorable Christian Dorsey, who has served on the Arlington Board since 2016 and has been a friend of the city of Falls Church during that time. During his tenure on the board, Mr. Dorsey guided the adoption of the Virginian Zero Transportation Safety Plan, the Public Spaces Master Plan, the Community Energy Plan, the renaming of Route 1 to Richmond Highway, agreements for Amazon's headquarters in Arlington, and an equity resolution that detailed the scope of work in Arlington's mission to realize racial and social equity. The city council especially applauds Mr. Dorsey's commitment to regional collaboration and cooperation, as evidenced by his service as the Chair of the Board of Directors of the Metropolitan Washington Council of Governments, as Arlington's member on the Transportation Planning Board, as a principal member of the Board of Directors for the Washington Metropolitan Area Transit Authority, and as a Commissioner on the Northern Virginia Transportation Commission.
All right, well, you've done it all, haven't you, Christian? But we want to express our appreciation as well. I mean, as you just heard, Christian is obviously a regional leader that just lets some really great things happening throughout the area. And I would say also, you know, Arlington and Falls Church, I think, share a lot of values and a lot of perspective on the world, and we have learned an awful lot from you all about how you do business, whether it's sustainability, whether it's transportation. There's so many things that we have collectively, you know, either worked together on or have just shared knowledge and information. And there's also this other little thing that you may have heard of, one of the biggest economic development wins in the country in the past 10 years, which is Amazon, which is going to be huge, not just for Arlington, but also Falls Church and the whole region. So, congratulations on all your great work, and come on down, and we'll give you a recognition here.
All right.
I'd just like to comment before Christian leaves that he was chairman of the board at the Metropolitan Washington Council of Governments while I was serving on the board, and I will attest not only to his public service, but his patience. So, thank you. It's been an honor to serve with you.
All right. Last but certainly not least, Katie Crystal, and that is Vice Mayor Hardy.
Great, thank you. And I'm proud to read these comments, not just as a fellow colleague, but actually as a friend. Kate and I ran together first in 2015, which feels like eons ago, but she was smart enough to get out earlier. So, it is the Falls Church City Council's pleasure to recognize the achievements of the Honorable Katie Crystal, who served on the Arlington County Board for seven and a half years, and has been a friend to the city of Falls Church during that time. During her tenure on the board, Ms. Crystal guided approval of Amazon HQ2 and Arlington's response to the pandemic, advocated for better access to childcare, and worked towards solutions providing affordable housing by championing Arlington's missing middle zoning ordinance change. The city council appreciates Ms. Crystal's innovative collaboration with local women in government that create a strong network of women working in public service, which will have a lasting impact on how women are represented in the region for the foreseeable future. Thank you, Katie.
Thank you, Katie, absolutely. So, Katie, too, in addition to having a storied career in local government, is now carrying on, I think, in some ways, your work, John, in Tyson's Corner. She is now the CEO of the Tyson's Community Alliance. So, we're looking forward to, yeah, I think you're the perfect person for that, and we're looking forward to some really great things happening over there. So, thank you for all the great work you've done here in the region.
Dick's still doing business, by the way. So, yes, Mr. -- If I could just, as with you, the almost seniorest member of the council, thank all the honorees tonight have enjoyed immensely visiting with Senator Sasslaw down in Richmond. Great stories about the way Virginia was back in the old days and how glad we are that it ain't that way anymore. And John Faust is just always a, just a great guy to run into at all these regional meetings and so forth, just really lights up the room, and I always look forward to that. And Katie and Christian, who've done great things that were catalogued here and will do many great things to come, both of you, sometimes are not recognized for one of their signal accomplishments from my family's perspective, which is their support for public safety. The Arlington Police Department, I happen to know, is one of the best-trained, best-compensated, and most, you know, with it in the modern times, police departments in the whole of America, and they get credit for that. I know this because my son's a police officer in Arlington. In fact, Mr. Dorsey's had the privilege, if you call it that, of writing, what's the phrase they use? Not shot. You were right. And anyway, I want to extend my personal thanks to your work in that particular area because it sometimes has gone unnoticed, I think. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else have anything before we move on to our next proclamations? I think we've said it all, and again, thank you so much for your service. It's been a real pleasure serving with you. So let's move on now to next items on the agenda. You're welcome to sit through our meetings, not that you haven't already. And by the way, Arlington has 12-hour meetings sometimes I've sat through, so it's time to return the favor. All right. All right, thanks, everybody. All right, let's move on now to recognition of Christopher Fay upon his retirement. And who is doing the Christopher Fay Retirement Resolution? We already had someone who's Christopher Fay? All right, Mr. Duncan's going to do the Christopher Fay Resolution. We're all, let's pull that up, Madam Clerk, and we'll go ahead and... I have it, but normally it's on the screen.
Oh.
On behalf of the Falls Church City Council, we would like to express our gratitude to you for your contribution to the City of Falls Church and the surrounding community. Homestretch is a well-regarded and essential partner to the city. Your leadership has been instrumental in achieving great success for unhoused families in the region. As Executive Director of Homestretch for over 17 years, you led them in award-winning work to equip families with the skills, knowledge, and hope to escape poverty and homelessness. The organization's unique and impactful, all-encompassing approach to address the root causes of homelessness will result in positive outcomes for generations to come. Thank you for your commitment for advocating those who need it most in our city and our community. Congratulations on your retirement and a job well done.
All right, let's hear it. Christopher Fay. Come on down. All right.
Yeah.
All right, Ms. Hardy?
Just a quick comment, Chris. Thank you for being such a good friend of Falls Church. I think when I looked up the statistics for the success metrics from Homestretch, it was just so overwhelmingly impressive. I think in your tenure, you've helped over 2,000 families achieve stability and self-sufficiency. So thank you for being so critical to Falls Church and for being such a good advocate for housing.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, I'd like...
Mr. Snyder?
I'd like to add something as well. The kind of work that Christopher has dedicated his life to in the organization, it's hard work. It takes constant commitment, and to achieve the kind of success that he and his organization have is the result of really hard work. So thank you so much for all that you've done for so many people. I attended one of the fundraising breakfasts when folks would come forward and talk about the difference that you made in their lives. So thank you so much for that.
All right, our hats are off to you. Well done. Okay, our next resolution is Native American Heritage Month. Excuse me?
Yeah. Whereas Native American Awareness Week began in 1976 and recognition was expanded by Congress in August 1990, designating the entire month of November as National American Indian Heritage Month. And whereas Indigenous peoples have contributed significantly to the history and culture of our country and continue to be important change-makers for the future of the United States. And whereas the City of Falls Church respects and welcomes Indigenous customs and traditions, recognizing the ties many in our community have to Indigenous cultures across the Americas. And whereas we acknowledge that the Falls Church community is settled on the traditional land of the Piscataway, Manawak, Doge, and N'Kochtank peoples. And whereas, as the city observes Veterans Day in November, it is important to recognize the contributions of Native Americans who serve and have served in the armed forces in times, and sometimes at a much greater average than others. And whereas this observance is also a time to acknowledge the many American Indians and Alaskan natives who are members of federal, state, local, and tribal law enforcement, and who sacrificed their safety for the security of all.
Now therefore, I, David Tarter, Mayor of the City of Falls Church, Virginia, do hereby proclaim the month of November 2023 as Native American Heritage Month in the City of Falls Church, and ask all residents to observe this month with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities, and to learn more about the Indigenous tribes who first lived in the region and continue to shape it. Is there anyone here to receive this proclamation? If not, we'll give this to our entire community and ask that you make this observation. Next up on the proclamation front is a proclamation about Transgender Awareness Week. Ms. Hardy, were you going to do that one? All right. Did you have the proclamation? Okay.
Whereas the City of Falls Church City Council supports the bodily autonomy and human dignity of all members of our community. And whereas the School Board and the Superintendent for the Falls Church City Public Schools issued a joint statement on the transgender rights in Falls Church City Public Schools on September 20th, 2022, which assured the community of the Falls Church City Public Schools' commitment to value and support in every student their charge and uphold settled law and FCCPS nondiscrimination and anti-harassment policies. And whereas the City Council appreciates the School Board's leadership in ensuring that all students are treated with dignity and respect in our schools. And whereas the City Council has demonstrated support for community members of all backgrounds and identities, including transgender, non-binary, and gender non-conforming persons, with Resolution 2010-13, a resolution in support of diversity adopted March 22, 2010. And whereas City Ordinance 2002 prohibits discrimination based on sexual orientation, which has been historically linked to discrimination based on gender expression and identity. And whereas city-run programs, events, and activities are open to all to participate in a manner consistent with their gender identity. And whereas the Virginia Human Rights Act and court precedents makes it clear that government agencies and public schools have a duty to respect the gender identity of transgender persons. And whereas the week of November 13th and 19th is celebrated as Transgender Awareness Week, which seeks to increase the visibility of transgender people and the issues they face, including but not limited to prejudicial treatment, lack of acceptance, and violence. And whereas Transgender Awareness Week culminates in the Transgender Day of Remembrance, first organized in 1999 to commemorate the murder of Rita Hester, a transgender woman, and has grown into the recognition of many transgender people lost to violence each year.
Now therefore, I, David Tarter, Mayor of the City of Falls Church, Virginia, do hereby declare November 13th through the 19th, 2023, as Transgender Awareness Week, and Monday, November 20th, 2023, as Transgender Day of Remembrance in the City of Falls Church, and call upon the community to lift up the lives and voices of transgender people, work towards eliminating discrimination against all transgender, gender expansive, and non-binary people, and honor the lives of those who have been lost to anti-transgender violence this year and over the years. Is there anyone here who would like to receive this proclamation or would like to speak? You're most welcome to, if you are so interested.
Mr. Mayor, Sophie Contra, who works in the City Clerk's office and is our Public Meetings Assistant, would like to accept the proclamation.
You're most welcome to do so.
And say a few words.
Hi, we're back here again. I just wanted to say, in the absence of others who I hoped might help me verbalize the significance of this proclamation a little bit better this year, I just want to reiterate to council that as an employee and as a community member, this proclamation matters to me. I know it matters to other people in the community. Your support and your work to make this a community that's a place where trans people can live, gender non-conforming people can feel safe and happy and secure, is really important. And as someone who works for the city, to the rest of the community, I want to say that you are loved as a community member and a constituent and someone that we serve. You are valued, you are cherished, and I know that as an employee here with my coworkers, we want to make sure that you feel those things. And I thank you guys for sponsoring this proclamation again, and I hope that next year, maybe we can hear from some more people. So thank you.
You matter to us, and we value you. And I want to, A, personally, and I think on behalf of all the councils, say we appreciate all the great work you do and who you are and what you stand for and for coming to this evening. We appreciate and we respect you, and we are delighted you're with us. So come on down and receive this proclamation. And Ms. Connolly, would you like to do that?
Whereas the City of Falls Church is proud to join with the Falls Church Chamber of Commerce to encourage residents to take the Live Local pledge and patronize local businesses in Falls Church. And whereas local businesses and the Falls Church Chamber of Commerce are challenging residents and businesses to pledge to keep 20% more of their spending in the City of Falls Church during the month of November 2023. And whereas living local creates prosperity because of the multiplier effect when local people choose to buy products and services from local businesses, creating diverse job opportunities and strengthening the city's overall economy. And whereas shopping, eating, playing, creating, and doing business in the city adds to the local tax revenue base, which supports city schools, roads, and other city services. And whereas living local can be healthier for the environment because doing business locally often results in less traffic congestion and pollution. And whereas living local can be healthier for residents because it makes daily activities less stressful and encourages walking to local businesses. And living local supports neighbors and local businesses while also building stronger relationships and a sense of community. And living local helps to strengthen and preserve the fabric of Falls Church's unique business community while attracting new businesses to serve local residents and the community at large.
Now therefore, I, David Tarter, Mayor of the City of Falls Church, Virginia, do hereby proclaim the month of November 2023 as Live Local Month in the City of Falls Church, and urge all residents to take the Live Local pledge, attend some of the many Live Local events offered by local businesses during the month, and participate in the hashtag LiveLocalFC campaign by tagging local businesses and events on social media. All right, and we got someone here from the Chamber of Commerce. What do you think? You want to come on down and get this thing?
Mm-hmm.
You're welcome to say a few words if you want, if there's anything to be said about this we hadn't already said.
I think the proclamation really covers pretty much everything, but the bottom line is by living local, we're contributing a big deal to the community at large. It's a great community, and I think 20% is pretty low. I think we can, as walkable as it is, we can cover a lot more. Thank you.
Do it. Come on down and get this thing.
Mr. Mayor, I just might want to comment that the Representative of the Chamber, the Executive Director who just came up is doing a fabulous job for the Chamber and for the community, so thank you very much.
Okay, let's keep moving. Odes of Office, any odes of office?
Yes, William Ackerman is here for the Advisory Board of Recreation and Parks.
Come on down.
If you can raise your right hand, please. Do you, William Ackerman, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as a member of the Advisory Board of Recreation and Parks according to the best of your ability, so help you God.
I do.
Thank you. You are sworn in, and you can continue your service, and thank you.
Thank you.
Come on down, we'll give you our congratulations and a pen. Yeah. Okay, we are off to the receipt of public comments, and we will start with a summary of written comments. What say you, Madam Clerk?
We will.
By the way, did I thank you all for putting on that great reception?
Not yet.
Not yet, it's coming right now. Thank you, thank you, Celeste, Sophie, and Veronica, for putting on a fantastic reception out front, and frankly, all the great work you guys do, the unsung heroes around here. If something needs to get done, we don't know how it happens, it just does, and we know what you all, most of the time, are doing it. So thank you for your great attitude and working with us all. We really appreciate it, so thank you much.
Thank you, we appreciate all of you, too.
All right, all right.
Okay, so we had four written comments to counsel since the last regular meeting. Sandra Cleaver of 513 West Broad Street wrote in support of the Community Energy Action Plan and using budget surplus to fund climate projects. The Falls Church Climate Action Network wrote in support of the Community Energy Action Plan with some suggested changes and allocating CEAP-focused funds in the FY24 Budget Amendment. Jean Gresko offered suggested changes for future zoning code updates. Helen Kraft, 956 North Rochester Street, Arlington, wrote in support of the Palestinian people in Gaza.
Okay, let's move on now to receipt a public comment. That's for you all in the room or anyone on the Internet. If you'd like to speak, you're certainly most welcome. You should get a speaker slip if you haven't done so already. It's out in the lobby, fill it out and hand it to the clerk. When you do get called, we ask you keep your comments to three minutes out of respect for your colleagues here up in the dais and in the room. State your name and address for the record. Madam Clerk, would you call the first speaker?
Yes, first we have Mark Gross, followed by John Ward.
All right.
Yes, you should. 303 Link Avenue. I'm here to speak about the Community Energy Action Plan, but it's so far down on your agenda that I wouldn't be awake then, so I'll just do it now. I want to call your attention to page 27 of the plan. Page 27 of the plan, and if you adopt it, it is a policy of the city. On page 27, there's Action 4.2, which says, and that zoning changes to promote density. Now, this plan, as I heard about it yesterday at our VEPIS meeting, is about how the city, how the residents can reduce emissions. And it was an excellent plan, and it was an excellent discussion. This, I think, is substantially out of place in this document for a minor reason and a major reason. The minor is, everybody agrees that higher density increases emissions. So if this plan is how to reduce emissions in a city, this doesn't do that. The major problem I have is that this introduces a concept that is going to be, if it is introduced by a council as an actual zoning change, this is going to be very heavily debated. If you think that T-zone ordinance discussions were a lot, this will be a lot. What... What troubles me is having this policy slid into a document that you are going to adopt, if you do, without any notice to the public that something as important as this is in a document that you wouldn't expect to see it. I happened to read over the plan for yesterday's meeting at VEPUS, and I was awfully surprised to see it here. This is a substantial step, and I would hope the council, if it proposes a step, and I'm saying it is right or wrong, either way, if you are going to at least have the transparency to announce to the public that you are going to do this. Hiding it in this document where it simply doesn't belong, I think, is questionable. And I would hope you would agree, take it out, and if you are going to suggest higher density in terms of units, multiple units per lot, and smaller R1B lots, do so publicly and tell the public you go into, and don't slide it into this document. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, Madam Clerk?
Yes, we have John Ward, followed by Michael Trauberman.
Good evening. I'm John Ward, 335 Riley Street, speaking on behalf of the Steering Committee of the Falls Church Climate Action Network. I'm here to endorse two of the resolutions that are on your agenda tonight. First, we support city council adopting a net zero or 100% reduction goal for citywide greenhouse gas emissions by 2050, replacing the current goal of an 80% reduction. The scientific consensus is that the world must accelerate its growth, its progress towards this goal, and targeting net zero emissions will align this community with goals already adopted by the Commonwealth and by our neighboring jurisdictions as discussed in the staff report. Second, we wish to thank city council and staff, especially Andy Young, for devoting the resources and time to develop the city's first Community Energy Action Plan focused on actions, policies, and programs staff might implement to help residents and businesses reduce their greenhouse gas emissions. From what option of the plan is on your agenda tonight, the draft plan has already begun serving as a basis and a reference for how city staff might help local businesses cut their energy costs, as proposed in the budget amendment that is currently under consideration. We urge city council to adopt this draft plan tonight and encourage you to implement it in future budget ordinance and policy actions. And as a local volunteer organization, the Falls Church Climate Action Network looks forward to helping our community in this mission. Thanks for your time.
Thank you for yours. We appreciate it.
Next is Michael Trauberman, followed by Joseph Shirizzi.
There we go. Now we're on. Good evening. My name is Michael Trauberman, and I reside at 323 North Underwood Street. I have several lengthy comments this evening, none of which I trust you will find surprising. First, I strongly support TR 2333, which is the resolution to revise the city's community-wide greenhouse gas emission goal to net zero emissions by 2050. Second, I strongly support TR 23-30, which is the resolution to adopt the Community Energy Action Plan. And last, thank you to city staff and Andy Young for your hard work on the Community Energy Action Plan. You didn't have much time or money, but you did an outstanding job. I hope you all agree, and I thank you in advance for your support.
All right. Anyone else?
Joseph Shirizzi?
Ah.
Good evening. My name is Joseph Shirizzi. I live at 321 Gundry Drive. My comments this evening do not represent any group or organization or just for myself. I'd like to ask city council to adopt the updated goals, as my other ESC colleagues have mentioned. The net zero by 2045 is the goal that the state of Virginia has set by the legislature. So if any city in Virginia is going to hit those goals, why not be us? Why shouldn't it be us? And Falls Church City Council has already voted to try to act as a leader in climate policy and across the Commonwealth, so this would be a step towards actually fulfilling those kind of promises that have been made before. So I strongly support that. Second, the Community Energy Action Plan is a really good plan. It's not perfect, and I definitely think city council should automatically readdress it every three or four years, or even more often, and see how are we doing on the specific goals that are laid out. And that's actually one of the things that really stands out to me about it, is that there are really specific goals in here of how many electric water heaters need to be put in, and how many cars exactly do we need to get off the streets per year to reach our plans and our goals between now and 2045? And we haven't had this kind of plan before. So it's not perfect, but I think it is a really good plan that should definitely be adopted. Just to address the density thing, I think obviously this is not like a sneak-in density thing. This doesn't, there's nowhere that it says like, oh, this zone should, you know, increase by however many units. There's nothing like that in there. There's a principle of good urban planning, and good urban planning obviously is very related to our climate goals. If there's one bakery on this side of town, and one person lives on this side of town, and they drive to get their baguette every morning, that causes a lot more emissions than if there's someone who lives over here and a bakery over here, and someone who lives over here and there's a bakery over here, and we can walk. So even if there's more people and more businesses, our net emissions can be much lower when we have good urban planning and beautifully designed neighborhoods like we do in Falls Church. So I'm very optimistic about it, and I sincerely hope that you will vote to approve that tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, anyone else?
That's all I have for them.
All right. Anyone else? If not, let's...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I wanted to just address very quickly a comment that we had this morning, this afternoon, this evening in writing, and previously some citizens addressed this on the events in the Middle East. In the year 2000, I had the opportunity to participate with Israelis, Palestinians, and U.S. officials in a seminar in the Gaza Strip. The statement has often been made about the Apollo mission that failure is not an option. Well, regrettably, failure was an option, and what we have seen throughout October and recently, we have seen failure, a collective failure of world leadership. And I hope that somehow something positive can come out of this absolute humanitarian disaster for both Israelis and Palestinians. And I conclude with a statement from my religion, blessed are the peacemakers. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Let's move on now to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor Tarter, and members of council. I did want to report for the community that last week, we had a closing on the Virginia Tech Northern Virginia site with Converge LLC. This is the eight-acre site that has been the home of the Northern Virginia Center since 1995. And this closing to transfer the property to Converge LLC follows the zoning approvals that were granted by Fairfax County for the redevelopment of the site. The Converge site will include the headquarters for HIT Contracting, and that will be a net zero energy building with a solar canopy array to meet all of its energy needs. It will host the Virginia Tech Center for Smart Construction, which will be a very useful center for a laboratory for emerging technology in the construction arts that will serve the region and the Commonwealth of Virginia and the nation. It will have residential and retail, and it will also complete the West Falls Station Boulevard through the site. The city council approved the purchase and sale agreement just a year ago, about 14 months ago, in August 2022, after much discussion and public hearings. Following the provisions that were spelled out in the 1995 ground lease, the sale proceeds were divided between Virginia Tech, UVA, and the city of Falls Church, and the city's share of the sale of the property to Converge LLC was $8,429,000. We'll be programming those funds through the capital improvements program in the coming months for the lasting benefit of the taxpayers of the city. Also, we just want to note that this closing is another milestone in a decades-long planning effort that was initiated by the city of Falls Church, and we recognize tonight, the city council recognized tonight, a lot of the people in the region who helped with that planning effort. It came about with the completion of negotiations for the future of water service in Northern Virginia with the sale of the city water system to Fairfax Water and a boundary adjustment to bring George Mason High School and the property yard, the Robert Gulf property yard, into the city limits. The school board supported offering 10 acres for commercial development to help pay for a brand-new high school. And our first step in that planning effort after that boundary adjustment was to reach out to Fairfax County and to Womata and to UVA and Virginia Tech to share our plans with them and to encourage our neighbors to reimagine the West Falls Church area with us. And this closing is just one milestone in that what will eventually be a very walkable, a very sustainable, a very vibrant place to live, work, and play, right adjacent to now the brand-new Meridian High School. So I just wanted to note that that closing occurred and another step in that process. That's all I have to report tonight. Be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Any questions for the city manager? Mr. Duncan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to request that the manager ask the communications department to provide a transcript of his excellent remarks just now delivered and post those on social media and other communications. I think it's, what you said is exactly right, and from my perspective, when I first started getting active in city affairs, the main complaint filed to the city council was, "We talk a lot about things, but we don't really ever get much done." And now the complaint is quite the opposite. It's, wow, things are going so fast, and so much is getting done, I can hardly, my head's spinning. I personally would rather sit in the second place than the first place and be party to the progress that we've seen here in the last 10 or 12 years especially. But what you just said and how you said it is exactly what we need to get out to the community and to the region, to show that Falls Church is aspiring to be a regional activity center with all the amenities of a full-service city. So that's my remark. While I have the mic, I wanted to thank, and maybe you'll mention this a little later on, everyone who was involved in the Veterans Day program on Saturday, staff, and all the volunteers who make that program, really a special part of the Falls Church experience every year. Speakers are great. This year's speaker was especially good. The mayor's remarks were excellent, as they always are, and awards were given to very well-deserving people, including up at the VFW post after Veterans Day ceremony, awards to, an award to Ms. Connolly for her contributions to the veterans community, especially recognizing our high school graduates who lost their lives in service to the country. So I just want to thank and convey, please, our thanks to the staff for taking a day off since Veterans Day fell on a Saturday this year to make that event possible. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Duncan. Well said.
If I could just respond, we do plan to have a release out on the closing with the Converge LLC, and our Office of Communications has put that together, but we are patiently working with our other partners in this, and we didn't want to get out ahead of them on this. But I think everybody is ready to go, and we will get that out this week.
Great. I appreciate you tolerating my impatience. Old man in a hurry here.
All right. Any other comments anyone has? Ms. Hardy?
While we're at West Falls, given that we had gotten some public comment, and there was a lot of public discussion about this, and Wyatt, you had updated us over email, but I thought it was worth updating the community on where we are with the mural and the blank garage wall. I think you sent us an update, but it's probably worth letting everyone else know where that stands.
Thank you for the prompt on that. So we've discussed this with Hoffman. Hoffman has drafted up basically a schedule of work, and the bottom line is they plan to have the mural completed this spring, and they want to work with community over the cold weather months to finalize the mural design. They've hired a very well-respected muralist to put together the concepts, and they will then, as soon as the weather is warm enough, then be able to do that. So that the large blank wall, which is the garage, which will be, not have any buildings in front of it probably for about five years until Phase Two of West Falls is developed, will have a mural. And that was at the council's insistence. The development team agreed to it, and then the council then said, well, let's get it sooner rather than later, and I think the schedule lays out, I think, the earliest practical way to get that artwork out.
Nice work. Thank you.
All right. Anything else? Let's move on then. We are on to business on the agenda. Madam Clerk?
Yes, first we have a public hearing and second reading on TO 23-13, Ordinance to amend Ordinance 2062 regarding the budget of expenditures and revenues appropriating funds for fiscal year 2024 for the General Fund, School Operating Fund, Affordable Housing Fund, and the Capital Improvement Programs Funds.
All right. Have at it, Ms. Bow.
Good evening, Mayor Tarter, members of council. We have second reading of the first budget amendment in this fiscal year 2024. There are no changes since the first hearing, and there are appropriation requests for multiple funds. Of note is for fiscal year, in general fund, your ending balance with 4.2 million, we are requesting an appropriation of 2.4 million and leaving a balance of 1.76 million. The 2.4 million, the request that we have is to address CIP project shortfalls for government operations and community energy plan and the environmental sustainability bucket. We are requesting funding for equipment and facilities and some miscellaneous funding, which includes assistance for affordable housing projects and CCAUs in the community and other demographic study and 75th anniversary celebrations, and the whole list is provided on Table Three of the staff report. I'll stop there since there are no changes since the first reading and see if there are any questions.
All right. Are there any questions? I'm not seeing any. Is that it for you? Okay. Any member of the public wish to speak to this matter? Seeing none, the matter is closed to the public. Any comments from council? A motion from council?
Move to adopt TO 23-13. Second.
Ms. Connolly on the second. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Leon?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
And Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Motion carries six to zero.
All right. Let's move on to the next item.
We will note that there was a public hearing scheduled for an appeal to a HAB decision, but the applicant has requested that be moved to November 27th, and so we did do that, and it has been duly advertised for the next meeting.
So I've seen that, and I would just ask that city staff prepare a detailed memorandum, not just of the facts, but of the procedure and of all the details. These don't come before council very often, and so I want to make sure this is done properly. So if you could, just ensure that we have full information, legal background, if there is any, to be known to make an appropriate decision. All right. Let's go to the next item then.
Yes, we have TR 23-33, Resolution to Adopt a Revised Greenhouse Gas Emissions Reduction Target for the City of Falls Church.
All right. Mr. Young?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, for your time this evening. I'm here this evening to request adoption... I'm here, I'm here this evening to request adoption of a revised greenhouse gas emissions reduction goal for the City of Falls Church of achieving net-zero emissions by 2050. This is a change from the goal set in 2017 of achieving an 80% reduction in emissions by 2050. Avoiding the worst impacts of climate change will require aggressive action to reduce the greenhouse gas emissions that are causing the earth to warm. A sharp reduction in emissions is needed to slow climate change and avoid the most severe impacts. For this reason, many local, state, and national entities have set net-zero or carbon-neutral goals by 2050, to include the United States, the state of Virginia, and our neighboring counties of Arlington County and Fairfax County. Adopting a net-zero emissions goal by 2050 would align the city's goals with those of neighboring jurisdictions, the state, and the federal government, and would also live up to the vision set out in the Comprehensive Plan to be a leader in environmental sustainability. Note, both the Planning Commission and ESC have passed motions in support of this change. I'm happy to take any questions you'll have.
All right. Let's ask some questions, if there are any. Any questions from anyone here? Mr. Snyder.
First of all, I want to thank you for the extensive work you and the Environmental Sustainability Council and everyone who's been involved. We had a citizen tonight who raised the question about Section 4.2, which is a very ambitious, to say the least, discussion of potential zoning actions in the future. And yesterday, you were asked that question, and you said that increased density brings increased emissions. You also said, however, that it could have a positive regional impact. Do I have, if I sort of accurately summarize that?
Yes, I believe so. Right? So it all depends on kind of your frame of reference, right? If you're looking at just within our 2.2 square miles, any growth in the city has a chance of, you know, increasing emissions. But I think when you look at it in a regional context with the notion of activity centers and the role the city plays in the region from that standpoint, it has the opportunity to help. And I think what, I mean, we're kind of jumping to the next kind of element on the agenda, but, no, I'll leave it at that.
Okay.
All right. Any other comments? I would just say, as a prelude, I support the goal. I have some issue with, for example, putting multiple houses on lots without more discussion, sort of formally, publicly endorsing that without any discussion. And I think this Section 4.2 is a prelude to what I might say in about 45 seconds, should be changed, should be altered to give it a more broad notion without the specifics of things that I think are probably objectionable to some people in this community and certainly haven't been spoken about in the community. But let's go ahead and stick with what is before us right now. I don't think we have a motion yet about this. First, I want to ask for any public comment. Does any member of the public wish to speak to this matter? Seeing none, the matter is closed to the public. Do we have a motion on this particular item?
Yeah, I moved.
Want to go?
No, you can go ahead.
So, Mayor, I move approval of TR 23-33.
So Ms. Connolly on the second?
It was me. Leon, Ms. Leon.
I'm sorry.
It was quiet.
And I would note that Vice Mayor Connolly was also very much moving.
The third.
Right.
Hardy.
She was the fourth.
Vice.
We have a, we had a motion, a second, a third, and a fourth, but we're gonna just record the second. All right, Madam Clerk.
So that was Mr. Snyder and Ms. Leon. Okay, thank you. Ready for the vote?
Yep.
Okay. Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Leon?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Thank you, council.
Thank you. All right, let's go on to the next item.
Next, we have TR 23-30, Resolution to Adopt the Community Energy Action Plan for the City of Falls Church.
All right. Well, thank you, thank you again for the opportunity to be here. Here to request the adoption of the Community Energy Action Plan. The plan before you sets forth strategies and actions necessary to reduce the city's greenhouse gas emissions in support of the city's goals of 50% reduction in emissions by 2030 and the newly adopted net-zero emissions goal for 2050. This plan has been developed with extensive, extensive input from staff, the ESC, and boards and commissions. Both the ESC and Planning Commission have adopted motions supporting the adoption of this plan. The plan prioritizes actions to reduce emissions related to transportation and buildings specifically, which are responsible for 90% of the emissions here in the city. Specific strategies include enhancing access to car-free alternatives, accelerating the shift to electric vehicles, improving efficiency in electrifying our buildings, minimizing the carbon impacts of new development, and increasing the use of renewable energy. Plan outlines priority actions for 24, 2024 and 2025, and recommends revisiting the progress every three years to identify new opportunities to close our emissions reduction gap. Addressing climate change is an enormous challenge for us all to tackle, and this plan sets the city on a good path towards meeting its emission reduction commitments. Staff's excited to move forward to the implementation of the items outlined in this plan. I'm happy, happy to take any questions you have.
All right. Thank you for your good work and all the various commissions as well, and for folks who've turned out tonight. I think we share the same goal. I think there may be a little discussion about how that is actually technically implemented. Comments, questions from folks on council? Mr. Duncan?
Well, Andy, the language about zoning, has that always been part of the document as it has evolved?
That's been in the draft since it was originally circulated on September 13th.
September 13th.
So it's come before this group, before Planning Commission twice, the ESC twice as well.
Yeah, I mean, I personally feel like I've listened to your presentation, and it gets better every time, don't get me wrong, but multiple times. I'm just, you know, asking because if there is any perception that there's some sort of 11th-hour component of the plan, I think that's, that's not accurate. People can have different opinions, do have different opinions, as we saw in the election, about the substance of the issue, but in terms of process, it went through the normal process and some. You've also given your presentation to, I think, some civic groups and others, VEPUS meeting yesterday. So the transparency of the process is not in dispute, I hope. The substance, we can speak to a little bit further.
I mean, I would just say this, as to your point, this may have gone, I mean, frankly, I'm here, and maybe it's my fault that we haven't, I haven't focused on this, and maybe others haven't as well, but I do think the public certainly is not aware of this, or not, has not been for some time, because I think this is important zoning change. I mean, we saw with T-zones, which has a dramatically less potential impact on the community overall, that we had months of intense discussion, conversation, et cetera. This, for example, allowing multiple units on a lot is pretty big stuff for folks. Reducing the size of a lot, an R1A or an R1B lot, is big stuff. That means you're, today, one neighbor, you might have two neighbors. That's very significant, to my mind, zoning change. And so whether it's been in things or not, I don't think it's really been focused on or been widely disseminated as information or subject of conversation. Whoever's fault that is, I'm sure it's partly mine, but nonetheless, to me, here we are with something that is essentially endorsement of some fairly significant zoning changes that I don't believe have been fully discussed in the public. I don't think most of the public is aware of them, regardless of what groups they've gone to. Ms. Connolly?
I just want to read this, because it, by enacting a plan, we're not actually saying we're doing this. It says, "Propose and evaluate zoning changes that would allow denser development within the city, which could include," and then there's a laundry list of what it could be. So it's not saying we're doing this tomorrow. It's saying, and, and there are other things on here, too, that say, "Do this," which could be this. It's not saying we're doing all of it. So.
Certainly not saying we're gonna do these things, but to me, it's an endorsement of essentially, I could see someone two, two years from now saying, "Well, you guys voted unanimously seven to nothing to talk about making multiple lots, multiple houses on a lot, reducing the size of these things." I mean, to me, this is the start of a conversation that has not yet had, and we're already voting on it. So personally, I have issue with it. You may not, obviously, we may share different opinions.
Yeah, I do, I don't, I hear the concerns, but I think because of the way the reading is, I don't have that same concern, that we're saying we're absolutely doing this. It opens the door to a conversation.
I'm not asserting we're absolutely doing it. I'm saying we're adopting something as a body that essentially leads to the conclusion that we are considering that, that's a possibility. To my mind, I'm not willing to say I would consider putting multiple houses on a lot at this point. I don't think without any public discussion about it, that's an appropriate conversation to have and to vote, to put that into a plan, I think is extensive. But anyway, others may disagree. Mr., anyone? Who wants to go next? Ms. Hardy?
So thank you, Andy, for the work on this. I actually had one question and then comment. I noted in the staff report that you had said that the population grew in Falls Church from 2005 to 2020 by 34%, but when we last took our greenhouse gas emissions inventory, it actually dropped by 22%. Obviously, there's an asterisk because that was COVID. But when do we take our next greenhouse gas emissions? So when can we actually get the latest data on that?
I believe COG's gonna work on the 2023 data, but it's a, it's a pretty extensive process, so it'll be sometime next year before we'd have that data.
Yeah, so I certainly think, I appreciate the concern around the transparency and the debate on, you know, do we want to take on these land use changes? But I think there's multiple studies and many opinions and facts, actually, that emissions and density and land use are intricately tied, and we can't have a conversation about climate change unless we're serious about rethinking our land use decisions, because reality does show that per capita emissions actually drops with density. And so I think that's an important thing to keep in mind, is the actual data's out there, that while we may be increasing density, I think one of the public comments was really salient. The fact that you could have your bakery near where someone lives means that your trips are actually going to be shorter. You may not even have to drive in some cases. And so while there's a regional focus with climate change and density, I think even locally, when you put people where the jobs are, where their services are, that means they don't necessarily have to get in their car. And we know that cars and buildings emit 90% of our greenhouse gas emissions. So I do think it's worth making sure that the facts are out there when we talk about this. So I support the plan as it stands. I think you all have done amazing work. It doesn't endorse any specific changes, as Mary Beth said. I think it, obviously, further community conversations are needed, but I do think it is important to talk about the facts when it comes to climate change and how that, how land use, I think, is very much tied to that. So thank you.
Others? Ms. Connolly?
Beyond 4.2, I really do want to thank you for this whole plan. It is very well done. It covers a lot of ground, a lot of air, and I think what's most impressive is that there are specific suggestions and steps that people can take. So at yesterday's VEPUS meeting, Mr. Ward's presentation on what are the things that individuals can do, I think that's so important. And I really like your idea in here of creating a clearinghouse of ideas and being able to answer questions and help people in the community be able to figure out how they can actually make a difference here. And your hot water idea is reminding me that mine is dripping, so I need to figure out how to get an electric hot water heater. But I do appreciate that. There was a woman yesterday who asked a question, and her question was, "How is the energy in this area generated?" So as we are encouraging people to switch to electric appliances as part of the plan, I thought hers was a good question to back up a little bit and say, "How, what does the grid look like now, and how can we expect the grid to get greener over time?" So can you answer that question again, just for the good of the order here?
I don't know that I can quote the specific statistics that John did yesterday, but, but the idea is, you know, the electric grid is already cleaner than, you know, using natural gas, kind of at your home, straight-up burning fossil fuels, kind of on-site. And, and particularly with the Virginia Clean Economy Act and where the grid is headed, you know, it's going to continue to get cleaner with the introduction of renewable, continued addition of renewable energy. And so kind of from a longer-term strategy standpoint, it's really important to get things shifted to electricity, because that is the path to net-zero emissions that we were talking about this evening. You can't ever get there if you're, if you're burning natural gas at your home.
Thanks.
Hopefully that helps.
Yep, thank you.
Ms. Leon?
I, I really appreciate the conversations we've had on this, I think, between work sessions and just the time spent on it. I think it's, it is a well-thought-out plan. We outline strategies. It's very structured to support, here are the tactics, you know, that support those strategies. And, and I, you know, fully support it, and it's really important that the, we as a community really take a look at moving past a plan, well, strategies, and kind of looking towards racking and stacking and prioritizing which of these tactics kind of help us achieve our goals. I think on page six, right, you said here in bold that the city will fall short of meeting its GHG reduction goals without rapidly increasing the scope and pace of action. So I'm looking forward to actually having some further conversations and taking a look at how we deploy our funds to support the action and execution of what we have in here. So I just want to say thank you for that.
Mr. Snyder?
Thanks a lot, Mr. Mayor. And I, I do want to thank Andy especially. I think of all the people who work here at, at City Hall, I have probably the greatest respect for you, so I appreciate all the work that you've done on this and the work of the ESC and everyone involved. I do think there are some weaknesses in the plan, and I want to go over a couple of those that would make it a much better plan. And regrettably, we're on second reading, so it's, I don't particularly want to slow things down, but there are comments that I would have. The first is, in terms of transportation, we need to focus more on the bus rapid transit project as hugely important, not only for the city, to give our citizens the ability to move throughout the Route 7 corridor without having to get in their cars, but the ability to reduce traffic volumes on Route 7, which are probably a major contributor to the transportation emissions. So there's a real opportunity here, and I think we need to talk about that more in connection with our, our work on transportation. The second point I want to make is, I think we're too modest about what we're asking from the state. We just had an election on Tuesday. Hopefully, we have a favorable political environment in Richmond, and I think we ought to be much more ambitious about what we're asking our state senator and state delegate to deliver in terms of funding, standards, and other things relating to, to climate issues. A third area I think we're totally underplaying is the value of trees and preserving the tree canopy. I went on the internet, and here are just a few factors about trees, some of which almost everybody knows, but they, of course, reduce CO2. But here's something really interesting I found, that a good tree canopy reduces home heating costs of 10% to 15% and air conditioning by 20% to 50% because it protects the house from the winds and the heat. So I, it, it also, of course, assists with water infiltration and retention, is good for the economy. So I think we're not focusing enough on preserving and enhancing the mature tree canopy. I think it's mentioned in here, but I'll tell you, I was astounded to see some of the numbers that are possible with it, with a tree canopy. And I think that's something the city has been known for. And then finally, 4.2. I would even not object to the inclusion of 4.2 if I felt that we had a history of truly reaching a consensus. And by that, I mean, strong reduction in impervious surface, not increases in impervious surface, preserving the important tree canopy that I talked about. And regrettably, with T-zones, the environmental impacts were ignored or actually made more negative. So I would feel better if I, we had a history here of truly protecting the environment as we achieve greater density. Regrettably, we don't. And so I do oppose the inclusion of 4.2 under these circumstances. So those are just a couple of the points that I would make to, I think, strengthen a plan. It's a plan I really wish I could vote for, but I think there are some elements here that can be dramatically strengthened, as well as the very problematic 4.2, but based upon the recent history of dealing with zoning changes, which require a lot of community buy-in, really hunting for consensus, and most importantly, truly protecting the environment. I'd add one other point. There's a discussion in here about reducing parking. Well, the effect of that, of course, is people are still gonna have their cars, electric or internal combustion, and those cars, instead of being on property, are gonna be on the streets. And there's also research showing that bicyclists prefer places where they don't have to ride right next to parked cars and run the risk of being doored by, by people getting out of their cars. So I just have a lot of problems with 4.2. I particularly have problems with our recent history in dealing with these kinds of issues. So with all, with all due respect, in many, many ways, it's a great plan, but there are points that I think could be significantly strengthened, as well as the concerns I've expressed with 4.2. And again, thank you for all the very substantial work.
Other comments? Ms. Hardy?
I went back to my notes and actually realized I had a couple of process suggestions. So building on kind of what Caroline talked about is, you know, if we adopt this plan tonight, how do we make sure that we take this to the next level, right? And so when I think back to kind of where we've made incremental and significant change in terms of investing in priorities that we espouse, I think back to neighborhood traffic calming. We started putting that in this line item in the budget about five or six years ago. Sidewalk became a new item that we funded. Affordable housing got dedicated line item funding. I think it's probably time and overdue that climate get line item funding, and so maybe potentially... And so, maybe potentially planting a seed with Mr. Shields in budget guidance upcoming. I would love to see actually dedicated funding, so not just headcount to actually work on a lot of these ideas, but actually consider dedicated funding. Because when I reflect back on where we've made successes as a community, I think it really requires that sort of dedicated funding in our budget to do well every year and not just on a project-by-project or budget amendment-by-budget amendment basis. So, that's kind of the first thing. The second, I think, from a process suggestion is, again, it's not, to me, if this really is that existential crisis, it's not enough for us to reflect on this every three years and whenever we do the next greenhouse gas emissions. So, just like we've gotten more disciplined with our CIP and our work plan updates, I would love for our climate progress to be tracked on a more regular basis with metrics and progress. I think, Andy, you've come up with some really great ones. So, hold us accountable to that as a community. Are we making progress on those things? And do it on a more frequent basis than every three years, because I don't think we have that much time to lose. Thank you.
Other comments?
Just one more question, if I might. I think I brought this up before, but one metric that I hope that you all will track a little more frequently is traffic counts on our major corridors particularly, but really all the streets. The last data that, you know, circulated and was publicized indicated that traffic, even after COVID, is actually down on most of our major streets, perhaps a little bit up on some of the arterial and residential streets. But in talking with folks like at the VEPIS meeting yesterday, it is simply, completely disbelieved that automobile traffic in the city has done anything other than skyrocketed in the last pick a year, five years, 10 years, 20 years, depends on how long you've lived here. And, you know, I was gamely engaged in that discussion and unsuccessfully tried to persuade the person that, no, the data actually don't show that. But, so, it's up to you all to provide us with the data that would at least ground our discussions in actual facts. And, you know, maybe at some point it'll turn out that because of the growth of Tysons and Mosaic and McLean and Seven Corners, you know, traffic will increase on Broad and Washington. If that's mostly traffic of outsiders, frankly, I don't care if they're sitting in traffic because maybe they'll pull off and, you know, patronize our businesses. But for folks who live here, taxpayers that we serve, the opportunity to do what Joe said, which is, you know, hop out and go to the bakery that's just around the corner over the long haul will reduce emissions. I mean, you see it in your normal life. I mean, you know, I used to have to hop in the car to go to a decent restaurant. Now, there's even on the West End, you know, any number of award-winning, you know, excellent restaurants that I can walk to. At any rate, I'm sorry to go on here, but one data point that would be helpful would be the traffic data point. If there's any way to quantify, I mean, I've got pictures, as you all know, I'm a shutterbug, of the new developments that have come in over the last 20 years and what they replaced. And I can guarantee you that everyone has improved the circumstances on the ground that they replaced. Because typically, they replace paved parking lots or gravel lots or some sorry use that is much improved over what we, that what we have now is much improved in every term, environmental, stormwater, you know, opportunities for businesses you can walk to. Perhaps in our next and my last EDC meeting, I'll ask for a summary of our accomplishments over the last 20 years in our regard. But anybody who's got a set of eyes can see that, you know, replacing a new building with, you know, lead standards that are high, that replacing a paved parking lot in the fortune teller business is a good thing for the environment and for the community, too.
All right, other comments? I've got a few. First off, I ran 12 years ago on the platform of redevelopment of our downtown. I've wanted to see more development on our commercial streets, and we've seen it. Over these past few years, we've got probably over 1,000 units, housing units, under construction as we speak, and more planned for the future that'll come online later on. I believe our number of housing units will increase 25 percent over the next two years. That's what I'm told by city staff. So, I'm for density, but to me, it needs to be in the right place. And the right place to me for density is on our major thoroughfares where there's transportation, where there's an expectation for height, not in people's backyards of their existing houses. And so, this list of things here, not one of them says, how about put density, more density on a major thoroughfare? To me, that's where your density belongs. Everything here is more units on a lot, reduce the size of existing lots. And so, these are all solutions that basically poke in our established residential neighborhoods. And to my, to my mind, that's a bridge too far at this point. That's something I think needs community input. And I'm not, I think you've done a great job with this plan, but I'm pointing out my personal perspective on where density goes. And I'm fine with density. I think density is great for this city. I think it belongs though on our major roads. Where there's transit, there's going to be bus rapid transit. There's going to be all sorts of opportunities for buses and other things that you can do. And it's not disruptive to existing established neighborhoods. But every suggestion here essentially involves adding density into existing neighborhoods. And the idea of multiple houses on an existing lot, to me, is something that needs to be discussed before it's enacted through this plan. And it's a plan, I get it. But we're also voting on a plan. It's not just something that's on the shelf. This is being voted on tonight. And so, to my mind, this particular section is too far at this point. If it were to say, consider enacting zoning changes to promote density, I'm fine with that. But this notion of us tonight saying that we'd like to talk about putting, you know, houses in the back of other people's yards or your yard to have more units per lot to reduce the size of existing particular categories, we've listed two of them here, I think it's just too much at this point with that public discussion. And I don't care how many boards and commissions have discussed this, you know, 40-page plan. To my mind, this has got no play in the public discourse yet, and whoever's fault that is, I don't know. But the reality is, I don't think the general public knows about this, just like T-zones. We talked about it for a while, no one had heard about it. People started hearing about it, they came out, and we ended up spending a lot of time on it. I think if people knew that this was under consideration, whether it's actually going to cause it to happen, it is a step towards it happening, that I think that's most definite. And I think it's too much at this point. I'd support this language being revised to say, consider enacting zoning ordinance to promote density and leave it at that. But the ideas that are put forth here, I'd support it saying more density on our commercial corridors, on our main streets. I'd support that, too. But the notion of having this, allowing multiple units per lot, I think is something we need to have a conversation with our constituents about. So, if anyone's willing to make a change to this, I'm most welcome to vote for this. But in the meantime, I do have concerns about this particular section.
I had a question for Wyatt. I can't pull it up right now, but I believe our adopted council work plan from a year and a half ago does call out accessory dwelling units as an item that we all supported exploring, correct?
It does.
Thank you.
So, let's have that in there. Does a work plan call for allowing multiple units per lot?
It, no, it simply says, consider an ordinance, develop and consider an ordinance for accessory dwelling units.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'd prefer that 4.2 be eliminated totally because I'm very concerned, particularly, as I said, about recent history and zoning issues. But I would move your proposed amendment. Again, it's less than I really want, but it seems a reasonable way to compromise things.
I would second that. I don't know if anyone else has any interest in that, but revision to the section 4.2, essentially, I think, Dave, are you saying, consider enacting changes to promote density and maybe leaving one or two of these? Or what are you proposing exactly?
Just your proposed amendment, consider.
Okay. I'll second that if that's an amendment. Do we have a motion on the table yet? I don't recall whether we even do.
I don't believe we do. So, just in looking at this language, the, so there is the word enact, and so you would change that to consider, is that in the headline?
Uh-huh.
And then, under how, would you just strike basically the which could include, and then the bullet points after that? So, it basically just states, propose and evaluate zoning changes that would allow denser development within the city?
Yeah.
And end it there.
So, is there interest in that?
I do. But do we need a motion on the table?
We do formally, but I mean, I guess we can do this formally. Do we have a motion on the whole, the whole plan?
May I move to adopt the community energy resolution, or TR 23-30, the resolution to adopt the Community Energy Action Plan?
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Duncan on the second. Now, do we have a proposed amendment?
Yes, I move that section 4.2 be amended to read, instead of enact, consider enacting zoning changes to promote density. Why? And then the how. Mr. City Manager, you propose language for the how.
So, after the comma, city comma, strike which could include, and then strike the five bullet points so that it ends at that comma. So, it would read, how. Propose and evaluate zoning changes that would allow denser development within the city, period.
Okay.
All right.
Move that amendment.
All right, I'll second it. So, City Attorney, we can vote on the amendment right now?
The main motion's been made, and yes, you may move to amend the main motion.
Which we've just done.
Which you've just done. Vote on that amendment. And then, if you vote on the amendment, then the new motion takes effect.
Yeah. All right, so, Madam Clerk? I'd say before we do that, is there any member of the public that wishes to speak to this? Come on up.
Can you put that behind?
Good evening. I'll be quick. I just want to say, I think this is a Community Energy Action Plan. This isn't the government action plan. This isn't the ESC action plan. It's for the community. And actually, I think having the community completely bought into it and onboard in a more general sense is very smart and will make it more likely to succeed. And keeping things vague like this around zoning, if that is more likely to make people be positively receptive to it, I think is actually worth doing. You know, this is very, like, you know, many people have said, these are ideas, things that we can consider, it doesn't change any zoning anyway. And making this less contentious and more about working together to solve a global threat to our civilization, I think is a great way to do it.
Thank you.
Even with 4.2 struck out, I think it's very important. I completely disagree with some of the assertions about the negative impacts of density, but even with 4.2 taken out completely, this is still a great plan. Thank you.
I agree. Thank you. All right, so we have some comments that were made. Madam Clerk?
Are you ready for the vote on the amendment?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
No.
Mr. Duncan?
No.
Ms. Hardy?
No.
Ms. Leon?
No.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mayor Charter?
Yes.
Motion fails two to four. Thank you.
All right.
So, we return to the original motion. Are we ready for a vote?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Leon?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
No.
And Mayor Charter?
No.
Motion carries four to two. Thank you, Council.
Thank you. All right, let's move on to our next items, which is, actually, there's nothing on the consent agenda. Looks like it's just other business. Mr. Shields?
Yes, we have authorized the expenditure of up to $300,000 per fiscal year under an existing contract with Stonebridge Civil LLC for concrete in place and bricklaying services, subject to annual appropriation of funds for that purpose.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And this is not on the consent because we weren't able to have a work session to discuss this, but this is a request for a contract approval to do work that has been appropriated in the budget through the operating budget. It would be for sidewalk repairs as well as for brick paver repairs across the city.
All right. Ms. Hardy?
Side of questions. So, there were four areas that were identified, and it was $300,000 per fiscal year for this. So, is it fair that it's over $100,000 to repair each one of these crosswalks and sidewalks?
Yeah, the brick paver crosswalks, particularly across our heavy traveled corridors, it is something that has to be done pretty regularly, and it is something that's very important for ADA compliance as well to repair those brick pavers.
And do we look at, so if this is an annual, like, every five years we have to do this? Or what's the frequency of this kind of repair cost?
I don't have that exact how frequency. I can get back to the Council on that.
I guess I would like us to do the math, right? Because if we have to do this every three years or five years, let's compare that with the cost of replacing it altogether with something with much lower maintenance. I know Mary Beth and others have talked about changing our standards from brick to something else that is lower cost and less slippery, but that just seemed like a really high cost for just taking care of four intersections.
I think staff generally is very concerned about the costs of these. We do need to schedule time to discuss this policy question with Council. I think we had it on an agenda, and then it got, we moved it down the road a little bit. In the meantime, we do need to take care of these crossings that we have today, and, but we will engage the Council with the future policy question.
Great. Thank you.
All right, do we have a motion?
Can I ask one more question? Mr. Shields, when we, just across the city, because we have such a prevalence, because it's a standard on these brick pavers, are these four areas the urgent, you know, places where there's such deterioration that you've got to expend this immediately?
We do an evaluation of them, and if they don't meet ADA standards, basically, for ease of motion across them, then it goes up to the top of the list.
So, we've got paver issues across the city, but not what's driving this is the ADA issue?
Okay. And, yeah, just basic, you know, basic, keeping the city accessible for all of our residents.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
Do we have a motion?
Move to authorize the expenditure of up to $300,000 per fiscal year under an existing contract with Stonebridge Civil LLC for concrete in place and bricklaying services.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any public comment? See none, the matter is closed to the public. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Leon?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mayor Charter?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Thank you, Council.
All right, let's move on to Councilmember comments. Anything anyone wants to add? Ms. Conley?
Two things. One is that the Budget and Finance Committee will meet Friday morning. The main topic is Tom Clinton and his office presenting on BPO, and we're really excited to learn more, the ABCs of BPO, so that we can fully understand that heading into budget season. So, thank you. And I also just want to comment that our two newly elected council members, Jesse Underhill and Aaron Flynn, are here in the audience tonight, so welcome. Congratulations on winning your elections, and we will be looking forward to working with you in the new year.
All right. Anything else? Let's move on to the approval of the minutes, then. August 7, 2023. Any comments? How about September 11, 2023? Do you want us to do a motion separately, or can we do these together?
Together is fine if...
All right, let's, do we have a motion?
Do we adopt the meetings of the minute, the minutes of the meetings of August 7, 2023, and September 11, 2023?
All right, we have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Ms. Conley?[1753.15]